Welcome everyone, we are gonna keep on track with the agenda order. So the first item on the agenda is approval of our minutes of our last meeting conducted on September the 27th. Are there any requests for changes?
Will be approved second.
Motion by Mike to approve, second by Rich, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimously approved of the minutes as written. So our next item on the agenda is an application by Harrington Homes. It's listed as a second presentation of a 34 lot subdivision and site plan approval for Brandywine and its TSMAP number 109-2-7.1. So someone here on behalf of Harrington Homes?
We are. It's listed as a second presentation of a 34 lot subdivision and site plan approval for Brandywine and it's TSMAP number 109-2-7.1. So someone here on behalf of Harrington Homes? We are. Chairman, just give me one more second, this laptop has twelve battery, I'm gonna plug in just to make sure I don't die in the middle. And we can get I have a quick little PowerPoint that I'd like to go through because the last time we were here it was December of 2020. And here we are today in October of 2021.
Are you gonna bring that back with another person to present it? You were here in 20.
Was that?
You were here in 20.
We were here in 2020?
Yes.
And here we are back again?
Right. But the other one was for the train, wasn't it?
Well, that's a real project. No, this is for Brandywine.
Oh, it was Brandywine, oh, okay, sorry.
I do, some days I do more things than one. We have a few things going on in our.
No, I know you were here before for him.
Yes. So with that, Lisa, if I can be advanced, I can pop up on the PowerPoint.
Yep, you should be on set.
Okay, you there? Oh, look at that, work. Okay, so we were here back in 2020. And with me today is Michael Panathou, Vice President of Harrington Homes, Mark Harrington is not with us. Online is our consultant hydrogeologist, Mr. David Stoner. If we need him, we can advance him as well, alright Lisa? So where we ended up, this, just as a reminder, discussion points, a continuation of Brandywine Estates, a subdivision review. Where we ended up was a discussion on water supply and the well water. And then I want to kind of go back to the subdivision somewhere. The development itself, as you recall, off of Henninberry Road to the south side of the existing Brandywine Drive. And as you recall, back probably close to 20 years ago, a development was always intended for this southeast. That development was close to 50 lots. Mark Harrington and Michael purchased this property and have decided to change that development scheme. This development scheme is for 34 lots in a horseshoe type of ring road development. We did analyze the access coming off of the existing Brandywine, we're at dead ends today. The problem is, is grade and the grade is excessive and excessively steep. And even though in two dimensional planning, it seemed to work as a continuation of this road. When you look at the third dimension and the elevations, it's really not feasible. The grade, it will be over 14%, which we feel is excessive, fire department would feel it's excessive. So we have discontinued in leaving this as a hammerhead that the access points become, and very similar to where they were 20 years ago, two access points off of Henninberry in a horseshoe development and 34 lots. Where we ended up was, we are proposing well water service because of the elevations. The current water supply that serves the lower end here in the north end of Brandywine and also the development to the east side of Brandywine is all on Aqua Water. But if you know that area, soon as you head south in Henninberry, the grade climbs pretty significantly and pretty quickly. And as such, once we get even to these lots, Aqua can't serve us without a significant booster pump system and/or another water well supply. And we had long discussions at, with Aqua back last fall, because we started this September 2021. And, and at the end result in December, we said, we'd like to pursue a well water system. The board at that point signed, said with Doug's lead, we're not sure, we need to have some proof that well water will be acceptable and sufficient. As such, we went to, and we dealt with a water supply and off of wells. And so we want to talk about that, the development will be three to four bedroom homes. The water demand for that type of home is 330 to 440 gallons per day. But please remember that our average lot size, with a required lot size of 40,000 square feet is well in excess of that, the average lot size is 63,000 square feet. So we're, we're providing acre and a half lots, for the most part, there are some smaller ones. But for the most part, on average, 63,000 square foot per lot. Whoops, my button, I'm faster than my button. So test wells were drilled. And in the process, our hydrogeologist, Mr. Stoner, submitted a plan to, through Doug's office, and Doug used his sub consultant Jerry Gould to review. So we had two hydrologists, some subsurface guys talking to each other about what's appropriate to get the answers or not answers that we're looking for. A program was agreed where three wells were advanced. Each of these wells, and we had Mark Shute, Shute Water System do this work. Guys who are familiar with Shute, they're right in Lafayette. They know this area real well, I think they, they drilled my well, which I'm further south on Henninberry. They probably did your guy's stuff on Henninberry as well, right, Michael? So they're very familiar with the area. So Mark Shute drilled and advanced three wells on lot five, lot six, and lot 29, over 300 feet. 30 feet of casing are placed in each of those wells. At the time, and when you drill a well, if you're familiar, you immediately test to make sure you have water supply. And at that time, each of these wells yielded about an average rate of 20 gallons per minute. And again, if you're not familiar, that's a great yield, 20 gallons per minute. You're, you're close to municipal supply when you're getting 20 gallons per minute. I've done municipal supply at 40 gallons per minute, that's a good yield. For a single family home, that's incredible. So it was decided, and again, working with, with Mr. Gould and Mr. Stoner, that let's do a well test that, that is more than sufficient for a single family home, but it's gonna, it's gonna show the effect. And how that works is one well is pumped at a rate for over 24 hours. Or in this case, because of some data issues, it was pumped for 23 hours at a consistent rate, a constant rate. And it was decided to pump that out at 12 gallons per minute. So 12 gallons per minute pumping for 23 hours. When you do that, and again, just, just so we can go back to the plan. So this is lot five, this is lot six, this is lot 29. And part of that program is to provide perpendicular wells, because we're looking at drawdown. We're looking at the effect of one well pumping at an incredible rate and how it affects the neighbors, okay? So with this well pumping, 90 degrees to that plus or minus is this lot. And 90 degrees in the other direction is lot 29. So we have that geometry that's needed to understand the hydraulics, an upgrading well and a transverse well, yes?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, could you just define drawdown? Because I've read through everything, I'm just.
So, so drawdown is when you, when you drop the well, before you turn the well on, it has a static, and we call it head, but that static elevation of where the water sits. Soon as you pump that, turn that pump on, the, the pump and the effect, especially at a high rate, will start to suck and lower the groundwater elevation right at that point. So that becomes the drawdown at your pumping point, okay? So, and that's measured in feet. So when that pump initially turns on, you're gonna have an impact to that well. But then is the other, and I gotta be careful not to keep saying well, because I do that all the time. But at the other locations, we're measuring without any pump on. But we're measuring the effect of that, that action at that primary location. We're measuring the effect at the other two locations to see if the primary location is adversely impacting and affecting the water aquifer at the subsurface condition. So we're measuring all three at the same time. Okay, so that's, that's the cause and effect. No matter what you do, no matter how good the water supply, when you turn that pump on, you're gonna get some immediate effect at that well. So in this case, and I'll get into the data, but when we talk about drawdown, it's the impact of that well on that pump. And so you gotta look at a groundwater supply, plus or minus as an underwater leak or an underwater pond. If, if you put a heavy duty pump on a de-watering situation, it's gonna lower the elevation. So that's the effect, and that's what drawdown.
That's it.
Does that help?
Yep, thank you.
I was curious, wells five and 29 were drilled and cased to a depth of 20, 30 feet. And yet number six was drilled to 120 feet, why the difference?
And again, we'll have to deal with, with Mark Shute on that. But again, as they're drilling, they're, they're taking sampling as they go down. And they're seeing what that strata is and what the material is. And really, you, the, by certified well driller, and he's, he's developing these wells as each of those are gonna be active wells. So you are, by Department of Health standards, have to provide casing to where you have consolidated bedrock. So you're not gonna have water quality impact in the, the surface matter above it. So, or if it's unconsolidated material, you don't want that diameter of that well that's being drilled to, to fail and to collapse on. So you need to provide casing up to consolidation. So in the, in the one case, we didn't get consolidation until they reached that whatever, you looked at more, over 100 feet. So they put the casing down to that point.
Okay. And I asked you something, when we're talking about drawdown, when we were drawing down on one of the wells, five or six, the other was simultaneously being drawn down as well?
But by the incremental amount was minuscule, it was really the cause and effect. And it's, it's really, the anomaly becomes, is it, is it acting, you know, very similar because it's on the same, and, and that was occurring between these two wells? So they're on roughly the same elevation plane. So they're, they're, they're being cause and effect. And we would tend to see that there would be less effect on, on the, the test well than the primary drill well. But again, the, the amount of, of the effect was so really miniscule. So just as an example, we had an overall, at the, at the highest point of the drawdown, and was, if you look at that data and the data that, that, over 200 pages of data showed the effect for every single minute for 23 hours. And if you look at those elevations, they're really consistent, really consistent. But the, the effect is only about 2.4 feet was the maximum drawdown. 2.4 feet, an acceptable drawdown for that pumping rate of 23 gallons a minute is over 23 feet. So we're only less than 10% of what can potentially be expected in that drawdown. And again, if we want, we can get Mr. Stoner, so he can speak to this better than I. I'm, I'm, I know enough to be dangerous, but Mr. Stoner is the expert, right?
I keep looking at all the numbers, every single page is all numbers. And they basically have no meaning to me, so.
Okay, so, so if we look at that, and, and we do apologize, the first column that has a bunch of Xs, and that's the data reader that, when Shute was out there, he didn't have the time and date turned on that actual data reader. But the first page, the first page of that particular well, and the, the particular dump says the start time and the increment. So the increment is every single minute for 23 hours. So in, in one hour, that's 60 readings, okay? So, so, so the, the next reading becomes the, the elevation or the actual, the head drawdown piece, so you can compare those numbers. And again, I gotta, I gotta look at what
Yeah, the column headers are cut off.
Right, but it's on the very first view, so we gotta get to. Essentially was a raw data dump. But if you go, if you go to that first page before that data starts, it's the water head and actually it's reading the temperature of the water. So that's something that is, that the hydrogeologists, when they're reading the data, so that third column is, is temperature in Fahrenheit. And part of the reason that's a standard is a lot of cases when we're doing these tests is for geothermal purposes. So that the temperature becomes really important for geothermal aspects of it. For a wa, for a well water source, it's not as important. But, but the, the, and I can show this page, which shows the header, the date, time is turned off, and then it's the water head. And it starts out, so the first, the first set of data, if we look at it, it indicates that the first set of data is on lot, where are you? Beginning data, eastern Estes, the location, well, lot number five is the first set of data. Sample period is every 60, 60 samples every hour, so that's what the S60 means. And then we have essentially a reference elevation to the, the temperature. So just kind of the settings that he puts on the data logger. And then, once, once that pump is turned on, the digital data logger is gonna read that every, every 60 seconds.
Okay.
So that's what all that data dump is. So then, if we go 20 some pages back, or maybe it's even close to 70 pages back, it'll show lot six and the header will be there, and then the data dump. We didn't, we, we essentially didn't want to manipulate the raw data, we wanted to show the town and Mr. Gould and that this is a raw data dump coming right out of the computer system. So we didn't wanna, you know, if it was me, you know, me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it all fancy and pretty and stuff, but I, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna mess with that data. That's coming directly from the data reader, and essentially it's a straight data dump that, that came back. So the, the data can be shown as accurate and submitted back. So again, I'm gonna refer back to the entire report that Mr. Stoner put together. He, he analyzed these numbers and took a look at the incremental situations and the, the fact that the main drawdown on the primary well is, is just over two feet. And the, the, the south well, 29, was in 24 hours, like 0.6 feet, meaning that there's virtually no effect at all for a neighboring well that is upgraded and, but perpendicular to that primary well drilling. So the, so again, hopefully that helps understand that data dump a little more. And again, we can, we can advance Mr. Stoner, or maybe he can help me from rambling on.
I've got a question also, if I can. The lots that you tested, five, six, 29, are on the lower end of the subdivision, elevation wise. There's some lots that are upgrade and they're 600 feet away. So what kind of confidence do we have that the report that's done on those lower lots is any way indicative of what would happen on other lots in subdivision?
So, so there's a couple things.
Yeah.
Each one of those wells where it's a significant investment by the developer. I mean, with, without anything going on, over 10,000 each, 15,000 each, well, so that's an investment to get started. So we're talking, and it's what, I, I believe this lower section is where they want to start. And part of my presentation is, there's 34 lots, but it's not gonna be all 34 lots at once, it's market driven. I think Michael and Mark are talking about four phases, potentially eight lots in each phase. So we wanted to take care of the first phase, so that's one reason, Mr. Rosetti, that we want to take care of that first phase. The other reason, it, it got pushed a little bit further to the west was, we tried to kind of get in here. The first test data were, were like these three lots. But because of the conditions and the slope and the accessibility, we'd almost have to build a road to get there, which was an additional cost. And because of some existing clearing, they were able to kind of come off of the top and kind of sweep into here pretty easily. So it was decided, and these were GPS located from the survey data of where those wells are gonna, because again, at 15,000 apiece, we want to make sure the wells were gonna work with the development if and when, you know, we get the, the planning board to agree to our development. So with that, those particular locations work geometrically within the lots, within setback concern, within potential house footprints and all of those pieces. So the other thing we kind of talked about as a team is with this phased approach, you know, there's other opportunities, once this thing gets moving, of, of cause and effect. But the, the main thing here is we got a yield of each time we drill a well, even this well at 20 gallons per minute. Even if you get five gallons per minute back up here, which we highly doubt, because we're gonna still be in that same aquifer, five gallons per minute is perfectly fine for a well.
I guess what I, where I was going with that is, this is a 35 lot subdivision?
34.
34. And you know, what you're asking us to do, I think, is to approve the subdivision on 34 lots without me anyone, I'm not sure, I'm not a hydrology expert. But I'm not sure I have a comfort level that there can be a well that yields what you found there on every single lot.
So, so then we kind of look at and you say, you got the geometry of, again, on average, 63,000 square foot.
Yep.
If we, if we had Mark Shute in here and he said, yeah, I run into some dry wells in the town of Manlius in, in this area or even further up the hill in the town of Pompey. And, and some of those lots are grandfathered in, and they're less than an acre lots. And he'll tell you, I've never had a problem with getting water and a sufficient water supply to a single family four bedroom home.
And the purpose of doing wells as opposed to getting Aqua Water, if I understood what you said earlier, is the cost of a pump station?
It was the cost of a pump, the cost of a water tower, and Aqua was saying they didn't want that infrastructure. It was, it wasn't an at length and detailed conversation that we had with Aqua last, between September and December of last year.
They didn't want the infrastructure for cost, or they didn't want to maintain it?
Maintain the whole, it was, it was an at length, total, full conversation. They said, we, at this point in time, we don't want, we don't, we don't want that water supply. And it's what, it, it was, I don't know, Mr. Rosetti, it was, it was at length conversation because we were like, and if we could get public water and public sewer, the infrastructure cost, that 34 lots now, just to make it work, was gonna get back to that 50 lots.
Call me Rich, we've known each other long enough.
I'm just being formal. Sorry, Rich.
Now, now that you mentioned sewer, that was another question I had, and I know this is way off topic because we're talking water. But I'm just curious.
No, we're, we're talking subdivision.
So where things stand with sewer?
Well, with, with sewer, frankly, when this question came up, we've been, for lack of better, on pause. Because this was a, you know, an investment. When we ended in December, we were, by the time we got all organized, it was winter. And then by the time Mr. Shute came back from Florida and get organized, and then he had a backlog of work, by the time we got him back out here. So it was not, we didn't get going. But at the same time, the investment that Harrington Homes put into this, they said, you know, we, we've got public sewer that's accessible to us. We know that there is a sewer surcharge that's occurring at a whatever ratio, that ever changing ratio that's happening with WEP. But they're willing to make that appropriate contribution that's needed for gallon per day, whether it's two for one ratio or whatever those costs are. I know we're beyond rain dishes that we've done for the last 10, 15 years, we're into other scenarios with WEP. But we're more than committed. The, the geom, the geometry and the elevations and the fact that we were right, the sewer is, is quite accessible to us. We don't have a problem at all providing that. Preliminary discussions with WEP was, you build the infrastructure, we, we don't have a problem with the downgrading. One thing you looked at with sewer is, if, if you're doing this and you're at the end of the system, is there appropriate capacity from that point to get to the nearest weather pump station or treatment plant? Is there appropriate capacity? And we're at the end of the system and there's many, there's plenty of capacity for us, so that, there's no other sanitary sewer upgrades short of what's happening at the treatment plant and WP's issues with the, the consent order with these.
Right. And it looks like it's all gravity treated.
Well, we're on the hill, that's one thing, it's one down.
Yep.
Nope, no, so the infrastructure becomes a gravity pipe and manholes. And then once we build that, that's, you know, design life of 50 years, but it'll be there for 100 years without any.
Okay, thanks, man.
Yes, sir.
You've got an average acre and a half lot, which you took the total thing, you divided it by 34, and you came out with 63,000 square feet.
No, we, we did this layout, we know what each lot is, and we divided, we divided, or we, we added that to what each new lot is, and we said, that's the average lot size.
Okay, the problem with average lot size, you've got three lots over the southwest corner, which together total 491,400 square feet. Now that square footage is equivalent 11 one acre lots. So what you're telling me is that your average acre and a half isn't an acre and a half, you've got a lot of one acres, you've got some very large three and four acres here, too.
Code says 40,000 square feet, there's not one at 40,000. We're, I think the minimum lot, I can advance, the minimum lot, I think is 43.
42.
Oh, I got it. The summary, so now we're gonna go through, oh, whoa. I showed my previous. I did the math really. Hold on, there is.
That's right, it's variable.
So the minimum, minimum lot size is 43,000, that's the smallest one we have.
Yeah, but now, now you're talking about one acre houses, each one with its own well, pretty much next to each other. Is that a problem in terms of drawdown?
And again, that's why when we tested it between lots five and six, it's 100 foot separation. But now that, that, again, when you look at tapping into a water source, and then again, when we look at it down the 250, 200, 300 feet, what the, what the individual borings are saying, once they get through that heavy limestone granite, it becomes less consolidated and, and, and there's still, but that, that vein is pretty wide open and it, and it is producing a significant amount of water. And so by pumping, and again, when we pumped at 12 gallons per minute, and, and even though both of them, five and six, had the equivalent drawdown of around two feet, two feet is still less than 10% what would be deemed acceptable, 20, it could be up to 23 feet. So what, what the hydro, hydrogeologists are telling us is that the aquifer, let's, let's put it this way, in 23 hours of pumping at 12 gallons per minute, the total gallons that were pumped out of that single well was 16,650 gallons in 23 hours. That's more water than all 34 lots would use in a single day, and it didn't adversely impact each other. So what we're saying is, if one well can produce enough for the whole development, and now, when you actually look at it, and the reality is those wells, even during peak demand, are gonna be pumping maybe a gallon per minute, maybe two gallons per minute at that nine o'clock or, or seven o'clock in the morning shower time or the dishwasher and laundry time at five at night. But there, there would be, have to be something pretty significant going on for a single family home to be pumping at 12 gallons per minute. But there there would be have to be something pretty significant going on for a single-family home to be pumping at twelve gallons per minute. So what we're saying is that's a huge factor of safety. When you when you're pumping twelve gallons per minute, that's a lot, a lot of water.
Not to give you a hard time, but I'm not seeing anything in the report as to where the discharged water is going. How far is the discharged water traveling before it goes back into the earth?
So you're saying during the pump time itself?
Yes, sir.
So uh uh when we, and I don't have it on this screen like I have. Uh, that question was asked by Mr. Gould. And in our response letter, um, Mr. Shute responded that uh that he uh took the water and I believe it was over a hundred and fifty feet away. Then during the entire time of pumping, the other lots at the at the feet were bone dry. So there was no, you know, water, just you know, kind of recycling each other. So part of the program was, you know, the fire hose that was connected to the pump was over a hundred and fifty feet away. So we were we were trying to, you know, again, good question, very good question. But we we thought about that in the in the test and made sure the test did not have that automatic recharge. So we're not just kind of cycling the waters. Plus, we're pumping down two hundred and fifty feet. It would, you know, through that consolidation and through everything, that vein of water, it would take a while for that immediate impact of infiltration to occur to the to the subsurface water source.
Okay.
You're not giving me a hard time.
Well, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to.
No, 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 it's good. It's good, good, good question. So, I'm sorry, I thought I was just waiting, I'm ready for the next one. So if if, you know, that's what was done. And and again, I'm relying on, and that's why we brought in Mr. Stoner. So Mr. Stoner, he is currently, uh, just a little bit of background on him. He is currently out of town. But he used to live in this area. He used to be with Doug at the town of Pompey Planning Board. Actually, I believe he was on his planning board at one point in time. Uh, so Mr. Stoner is a local guy who is a, uh, he used to work at Sterns and Wheeler. He's now, we'll call it semi-retired as a consultant doing things, but he is uh, he is out of town. But he's very familiar not only with Anadaga County, but with this particular area. Because uh he is uh, he's formerly of this location. So uh, so we brought him in. He actually uh was familiar to us years past because we've been around too long. And so we found him and said, would he help us out and provide his expertise? And uh, so Mr. Stoner, and and actually, he knows Mr. Gould personally. So they they've had a good camaraderie conversations over this over the last couple of months since the data has come in and kind of talked about some the the questions and answers. And I believe, um, and I don't know, Doug will have to speak, but um, short of some uh, the particulars, what I read into it is Mr. Gould's first letter is generally, he's in agreement, but there are some specific things that he had some questions that I hope we answer.
Um, okay, at some point, I see Mr. Gould is here today. So so at some point, it seems that the real issue is water flow and water volume. That's the biggest issue on this project. And um, if you don't mind, at some point, I'd like to hear from him.
Oh, absolutely.
See what your thoughts are with respect to his thoughts.
And since this is his field, again, I I think if we can put on speaker, uh, Mr. Stoner, I think that that would help the board as well.
That would be fine.
Okay, goodbye.
Can I ask a quick question while we're getting, while this is getting.
Yes, sir.
Um, in the report, it said that uh there was no testing down as far as quality of the water that that people recall I for something like that. But um, and that doesn't bother me too much, except that I didn't ask the question, does the Department of Health have to sort of well? Or is.
So so again, we knew we were well in advance of actually pulling permits and such. We we needed this data for the the test specifically. With the understanding, with that investment, we wanted to make sure the location was good. But certainly, um, prior to a- any building permit, the bacteria test will have to be performed on every, each and every well for the Department of Health to certify and say, yes, you're you are uh the P is as as good as the farm.
I wouldn't expect it to be a problem out there because I don't think there's any feedlots or.
There's there's no farming uh short of going way up past Broadfield. Then there's there's a farm lot that's actually across the street from my house.
David, are you on?
I am on.
Terrific.
Dave. Oh, not good.
Uh, can you hear me? Can you see me?
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Oh, all right. Uh, let's try something. Um, somebody knows more about Zoom than I do, maybe can help me out. What, I think I need to push the appropriate icon to show my image.
Yep, so in the bottom left-hand corner should be show video versus to start video.
It's showing a a figure of a person.
So both pull your cursor right to the bottom left of your screen. It's a kind of a pop-up, Dave?
Yeah. Well, the pop-up is there. It's just not um activating the um video portion.
Well, we can hear you fine.
Well, that's that's fine. You can imagine what I look like. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I, a number of board members asked some really good questions and Matt answered them, I thought, very well. And then bottom line is the the pumping test that we designed and carried out was specifically designed to demonstrate what you folks have uh expressed as concern, which is that this aquifer is adequate to provide enough water without individual wells interfering with each other to the extent that people run out of water. And having been in a resident of the area, everybody knows that the hill to the south is a lovely spot, but as you go farther to the south, it does become difficult to get um adequate water sometime. But we, this proposed subdivision happens to be in a zone where you can, where one can tap into the Anadaga Formation. The Anadaga Formation is a very productive aquifer. The the widths from north to south of the really productive, accessible part of the aquifer is only a several miles. Um, but we happen to be in that zone. And um, and you can see the results at twelve gallons a minute for twenty-three hours. We had very small, a very small amount of drawdown, which is, as Matt said, is very unusual. Um, but but wonderful for this subdivision. The other, um, the other concern that's been raised is geez, are there activities at the surface that could interfere with this aquifer? And we also happen to be, you look at the well logs, and I don't expect you to, but if you look at the well logs, you see that there's a several um actually thirty-plus feet of glacial till, which is very tight kind of soil material that we have lots of in Manlius and Pompey. That overlies a shale unit, which is also very impermeable. And that in overlies a really tight um limestone formation, which then is underlaid by that very productive uh section. So the top couple hundred feet are very protective of the water bearing zone because they're very impermeable. The water, for example, that was discharged from the pumping test would take a very, very long time uh to get down to a couple hundred feet below grade. Um, because the permeability of that material, the overlying material is so tight. So it's well protected. Um, you know, as long as the wells are um installed in that formation, it it's, they're going to be more than adequate for uh individual and appropriate for individual homes.
Okay, this Mr. Stone, we've already reported, uh, and it seems like the the hy- hydrologist, uh, Jerry Gould, that our town engineer brought in, and still has some concerns. Uh, would you be willing to listen to his concerns and provide us with what you think are the appropriate answers?
Of course. Um, we we did respond to, I'm not aware of Jerry um uh offering additional comments, but the comments that he offered a few weeks ago, we did respond to. I don't know if you were, if that was shared with you or not, but um we responded in writing and I had a conversation with Jerry, although Jerry was um at disadvantage. He was, he took my call while I was still on vacation and he hadn't, uh, and he didn't have the re- he'd seen the our report, but he hadn't seen the responses to his questions. But that he has seen those.
Mr. Gould, did you want to speak?
Sure. Um, let me start if it's okay with you. Just give a little background about this bedrock aquifer that we're talking about, the concerns that come with that. Um, rock, as you can imagine, doesn't have a lot of space where water can fit in. So generally speaking, in solid rock, won't produce water. So in cases like this, what we're looking for, we often run into is fractures in that rock. And the fractures act like pipes and the water can go really fast through that. Now, the good part is you get great yields, which is the gallon per minute. The challenge there is that also means that there's contaminants in there. They can move really quickly through those pipes. Or if you run out of water, it'll run out really quickly. You you might be making a lot of water, twenty gallons a minute for quite a while, but once you empty that pipe, then it goes dry. And you don't have any water. Here is when we put thirty wells on there, all pumping at the same time, that you may potentially dewater that. I'm not saying that that's going to be the case, but I'm saying the data doesn't really give us enough to show that at this point in time. Now, um, we talked about the pages and pages of data in the report. And what I did is I took that data and I graphed it, guess or graph from from the applicant, we didn't get one, but I graphed it. And I have some really a concern that what they characterize as stabilized, it really didn't stabilize. As they pump, the water continued to drop. And it may have taken, may take many more hours, many more days before it reaches stabilization, but until it gets there, we may just be de-watering fractures and not really um have something to replenish that water that's there. And the other concern I have, and again, we talked about the the Anadaga limestone being very prolific. Um, if you look at the bottom of these wells, and this is, I asked for elevation data. The bottoms of the wells are about six hundred feet in elevation. That happens to be the elevation of the creek over in Three Falls Gorge area, which is an environmental sensitive area. And that stream may be related, maybe tied into that aquifer, maybe draining that aquifer, maybe supplying it at Aquifer. But that connection could be a concern. It's only three quarters a mile away from the development. And that's another thing I think we need to look at and understand better before we can decide for sure whether the water supply is sufficient and whether the protection is there. The other thing I just had for protection, granted, there is hundreds of feet of low permeable material, meaning water won't go vertically through it. But every well you put in there is a conduit right to that aquifer zone. And I'm not saying this would ever happen, but all it would take is one homeowner, someone sabotaging their well, pouring gasoline down it, and it could go through those fractures and affect every well that's on there that's tapping into those fractures. So there's a potential, it may not help for the feedlot, but but someone were sabotaging a well, that there's a problem there too. Not that it would happen, but it's a concern when you have, when you have fracture flow like that.
Uh, ask you a question about that.
Sure.
Um, there's a standard, I suppose, for tapping off the well.
Right.
So you couldn't, uh, somebody could, they'd have to go to a lot of trouble to.
Right. And and it's, as Matt mentioned, that, you know, the wells are case that the surface that's protect, if you pour something outside, that protects something leaking down there. So a spill in the yard is not going to go down properly. There's always a risk that they wouldn't make.
I guess what I'm, when I'm hearing, and maybe I, I'm no hydrologist, so I I don't know. But what I'm hearing is that there's really no guarantees that water is going to be available at each one of these lots. So the question I would have, and maybe this is a legal question, maybe it's a development question, I don't know. If we approve a thirty-four lot subdivision, and after building six homes, I don't know, putting wells in, building six homes, we start hitting lots that are dry, what do we do? We've, we've got approved lots, but we can't get water. And then where do we go from there? I, and I don't know who, I don't know who can answer the question. That's the question I got.
Well, I'll, well, let me, I could, but I would say one thing you can do is you can drill deeper and try to find water deeper location. The challenge in this part of, you know, state in Manlius, as you go deeper, you'll get into sulfur shale, which produces sulfur. That makes water that may not be potable. So you, you may find the quantity, but then you have to treat it or do something different. And so there's some problems perpetually there.
Do we, it it, maybe this is a question for the board. Since we've been told that they're going to do this in phases, do we approve it in phases? That we approve four or five lots or wherever they want to start and then kind of roll through this thing? I don't know if that's something we can do or not.
Well, we have to really look at that because you're not really supposed to segment something like this. So we would want to see how the whole go about. And I really think about how that, what that look like.
Okay.
Is there anybody who has undergone something like this in the area, same type of well subdivision? You don't know?
To to our knowledge, again, there's a in Pompey, to the south, Windsbury Estates. So Windsbury, those are five-bedroom plus houses on about um those lots, because they're on well-inseptic, are two-acre lots. Um, the development of those lots, there's, what's in there, over thirty lots, right, Windsbury? Well over thirty lots. Was that the yellow bridge as well? Oh, the yellow bridge off the suite. So in both those cases, every single lot, and again, as as Mr. Gould said, and and as Mr. Stoner said, that's south way up the hill. And in both cases, there's been no problems, well water supply.
How long has that subdivision been there?
Oh, I'm done.
Windsbury's been there over twenty years. It was there before I moved into my house, which is north of Windsbury. That was twenty-five years ago.
Would you buy a house in this area?
Depends on the price.
I know you haven't seen an Harrington Home.
I have, yeah, they are.
So where do we go from here? Mr. Stoner, you understand what our situation is and why we're concerned. Is there anything you can tell us that will assist us in that?
Well, all I can say, I mean, I haven't seen what Jerry has uh done uh in terms of graphing the data. It it certainly looked to me like uh the drawdown was stabilized. And again, you have to keep in mind that we're talking about a pumping test that we purposely designed to really stress this aquifer. It was designed to not just give us a best-case scenario of what is likely to occur when there are individual homes on these lots. But what would, what happens if you pump enough water out of a single well to supply all thirty-four? I mean, that, we didn't design it that way, but. I mean, that, we didn't design it that way, but that's the way it turned out, to supply all thirty-four homes. And it did so without really a significant drawdown. What Matt was referring to earlier was the concept of safe yield, which is generally speaking, agreed to be two-thirds of the available drawdown in a well is considered to be what's called safe yields. So we're talking about roughly ten percent of the available drawdown in the, in the well with the least, the well of the three wells with the least amount of standing water in it. So I, I think, I'm not speaking out of school when I say, I think the developer is willing to demonstrate as, as he goes, as he has done so far, that these wells are gonna perform in the same way that the well, the well number five performed. And I think that's an appropriate thing to suggest and an appropriate thing for him to do is to verify that, that the wells are completed in that, in the Anadaga Formation, and that they all have, they may not all perform in a, in exact same manner, but in a, in a manner that is more than adequate for an individual home.
Rich, to your question about, where do we go from here? As someone who's lived in a well for the last fifty-six years, I can tell you that the Milner Field Track was all wells. Those were all acre and a half lots, it's very similar to this one, bigger, quite a bit bigger. Because there must be seventy homes in that tract. And when Okwa came in and said, would you like county water? A lot of people said, sure, and they did. And we're still on the original aquifer. There's only two of us, we don't use an excessive amount of water. But for the most part, even in a dry season, when we're running two hoses all the time, we've never had a problem running the well to the point where it starts to get brown. So I think the problem is more, it's gonna be the developer's problem. If after eight houses, the ninth one turns up dry, and they have to decide, we go to six hundred feet? Or do we say, let's skip this one and try the next lot? That's his problem, not ours. I mean, people are not gonna buy a house that doesn't have water. So I don't think we have to figure out how to guarantee thirty-four happy wells. If the aquifer works as well as it seems to, it seems like a good place to start. And if it doesn't work out later, people aren't gonna buy the houses and Mr. Harrington isn't gonna build them.
I think you just have to tell people what has been done so far, the study that has happened, the experience of people that live in the neighborhood that we hear say that, that they never heard of a well failing in, in this aquifer out there. That's about the best you can do.
No, I was just wondering, what, what, what would he suggest that you do at Three Falls Woods to check this subdivision?
I think this, again, questions I asked in my comments were, put together a cross-section, cross-section, show your profile of where the rock is compared to where the stream is, and at least see if you're in that, in that zone. And then we typically, before and after a pumping test that was done here, you would collect background data. You'd see what the water levels do over the course of maybe a week before and after, when you're not pumping. So if it rains, you might see a sort of influence or not. And that just all helps give indications of how the aquifer is behaving. And then maybe there's water that's draining out to a water body nearby.
Yeah, I just, my question was similar to that, I was just wondering if there's any other tests that could be performed that would give you the confidence that it's not just fractures running out rather than just that.
Right, oftentimes with these pumping tests, we'll do what's called a step test. So granted, twenty gallons a minute is a lot of water for one home. But if you're really gonna stress the aquifer, pumping faster, look for this sustained yield, you know, the water level doesn't change at all over the course of many hours. Then pump it a little harder again, and things, see some changes there. Sometimes fractures let water out, and we can see this in the data when it happens. Other times they, they might, you might see a quick drop in the water level because of new fractures being captured. So there's some ways to look at that.
Okay. Matt, would you concur that at this point, we're still missing a few additional items? We're missing county, final county sewer approval. About the final stormwater?
So where we, where we are is hoping that the board gives us some direction on the well source of the water. Where the engineering plans have a little catching up to do far as from September to the December meetings, I'm going back in time, there was some changes to the stormwater. If you recall, we had several smaller basins that the board would like us to, because of maintenance reasons and not putting things behind lots, we kind of redesigned the stormwater. So we need to, we've done the calc, but we need to complete SWIP and get that back to Doug. So that's one item, is the SWIP needs to be cleaned up. There is, and associated with that, there's some minor cleanup on the plans to get that, we've done a, not to my satisfaction, a complete grading plan. The road profiles did not change, some of the other things did, but we've got some, some cleanup stuff to do, Mr. Chairman, that we know we have to wrap up. But frankly, we are hoping tonight that we get some action with regards to the well source and that, and Mr. Paulson, I, I, I agree with what you're saying. It's like, being, being on a well for frankly, my entire life in different locations, but being on Hennepin Road and my well yield, it's, the, the risk becomes Harrington homes and not, and not the town approval process. And I think the due diligence that was asked for in the report that was agreed upon, I think, and we talked about briefly the expense that the developer has put forth, I believe, we've done enough due diligence to say, yeah, I think we've got a good water source here to continue. Now, it's your decision if you want to look at some of this further analysis or not. But in my opinion, in doing both commercial and residential stuff and in a site planning sense, I think we've done a good, fair amount of research into this. But there is some other items we need to do for subdivision approval, Mr. Chairman, that we would like to advance and get back to you for next time.
Matt, if I could ask a question, this, this plan is dated April of twenty. And I don't see any basins on it, and I don't see any common area. Has, has that changed? And I guess I'd take the next step and say, where are the basins going? Is the plan to put them on, because you just mentioned that you're gonna have some basins.
I don't know what to, what to look at.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so, and I'll, I'll kind of, so what we have here is a, when we look at stormwater. Now, I can talk in my language, all right? So when we look at stormwater, we have a watershed that, that kind of breaks toward Hennepin about here. And in proposed condition, we're gonna take most of this and bring this and get into two bio-retention water quality basins. So this entire hill is gonna come to here and here, and we're gonna bring this stormwater to two bio-retentions and then have a stormwater mitigation basin for quantity. That would then come into a stilling basin. And the rate of flow at this point has been squeezed significantly, so we're not adversely impacting downstream properties. But that's, before we had a basin like here and a basin here, and it was impacting like six lots. Now we're impacting, and we talked about the size of these lots, and these are oversized lots to accommodate those basins and still have that easement and ease of access that we talked about at that other meeting.
So there'll be some drainage easements here.
Again, we gotta carry that water, so we're bringing it here, heavily burned, and then channelized back to this bio-retention.
So these basins are in fact on lots?
Correct.
And the reason, who's responsible to maintain them?
I don't know if we're dealing with an HOA or how we're handling the, those, the stormwater management.
You don't give us the answer now?
So we, again, that'll be something, yeah, that we'll have to get into far as.
We'll need to get an answer. And we normally look for building envelopes and not footings.
Not a problem, we'll show the setbacks. We are trying just to kind of, again, because of that, I call it a geometric balance of wells and offset, so we kind of put a footprint on it. And again, when we get into, you're right, we'll show the setbacks and give you, give him plenty of flexibility. But we'll get into that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I think what we'd like to do is have you move along and provide us some additional documentation. How soon you want to be back on it?
I believe Doug, you're on Swift in two weeks, can I get on next month? So, so with that, with that affirmation, Mr. Chairman, we would love for you on next month. I will have, I will have a completed SWIP, completed set of plans to, for submittal that'll be, you know, well within the ten day prior, and I'll get digital copies and everything to Doug for his review.
Secretary for weeks from tonight is?
For the twenty-second.
November twenty-second?
Yeah.
Do you want any more additional information on, I mean, I was talking, you know, I mean, the impact on the critical environmental area?
Yeah, of course.
You want to put a couple thoughts together from tonight? Is that okay, Dave?
I'm sorry?
Jerry and I were just talking, David, Doug.
Oh, hi Doug.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
We were just thinking, we had a couple thoughts that some of the board members were anchoring around. I mean, he could send something over to you when you guys could connect again.
I, I, I didn't hear everything that you said, Doug, but are you saying that you've got some additional questions or comments that you'd like for me to respond to?
Apparently, yes, yeah. We'll have Jerry.
We're at for November twenty-second, very good, thank you very much, thank you. I have any agenda. It's an application by Kepler's Your Freeman Associates. This is a site plan and subdivision for a new dental office, eighty-one ninety-five Kisenovia Road.
Evening, Kepler's Your Freeman Associates. As you know, we're looking for two actions at this site, two lot subdivision and site plan approval. At the last meeting, which was added a site plan, which included two lot subdivision. One lot would be about two point eight acres and the other lot would be point six acres. The overall parcel area is roughly three point four acres.
Yes.
So we're proposing three thousand square foot dental office building, ten parking spaces, excess off of the Millstone Building property. I think the project was well received, except for the amount of parking you were providing. So we looked at ways to provide additional parking. Three thousand square foot building, ten parking spaces, and Craig can flip to the next plan. You didn't get this, we just made a rapid transition, see what's going on. So we, we have the three thousand square foot building. We now provide twenty parking spaces with the building. We slid the parking, or the building and parking a little closer to Route ninety-two. Let's see, we added ten more parking spaces on each side of the building. We also developed the drainage analysis for the site, which includes the subsurface stormwater facility below the parking lot on the south side of the building. We revised the property lines based upon the, the new layout, which was just sweeping up the lines a little bit. We added utility connections for water and sanitary. And we provided, as you can see, we provided a whole set of construction drawings, which shows not only the site, but detailing and wall elevations. And we also developed some parking counts for the Millstone Building. In the zoning data chart, five, based upon our analysis, seventy, or fifty-seven parking spaces would be required in that area. At the next submission, we plan on providing a full set of architectural working drawings, which include floor plans, elevations, and wall sections. And Craig has those plans with us tonight, that he can share with you. And that was it. We did receive a letter today from Lisa with Doug's comments, which we could review tonight. And that way we can all be on the same page.
If you would kindly would, yes, please.
That'd be great, okay.
May I ask a quick question before we go? Doug, the latest set of plans, what's the date on that? Eight thirty-one?
Ten and eight.
Okay, I don't have those, because the plans I had specifically say not for construction. And I think I heard you say construction.
Well, I mean, they're not construction drawings, so they're approved by the.
Okay, I thought that was you said.
Well, I guess what I was meaning is that we showed a concept plan before, and now we're developing the construction documents.
Okay.
Yeah, the plans that we submitted were made. Are there any other questions before we go through town engineer comments?
I think you wanted to get a grip on the parking, and where do your numbers came from and what you used?
Lot A, lot B. Okay, lot A, or lot B was started at dental office. That was, the town requirement is one space per three hundred square feet. With the first plan, we limited it to ten parking spaces, and this was a three thousand square foot building. Now we're at twenty parking spaces.
I'm not sure that was the right count, the one for three hundred, what, what did you use?
For, for this one, well, we used, we doubled it, we.
No, no, I mean, I mean, that original count, one for three hundred.
It was the only, one space for three hundred square feet of building here.
For office.
For, yes, for office, and medical office wasn't listed in there.
I think that was, I think that's, that was the issue.
Yeah, so, from the need space, we have plenty of parking for the facility. I'm just trying to think, for ITE, they usually require four point five spaces for a medical office use, so three thousand. So that would be about fifteen to fifteen parking spaces or so for this size building, so now we're at twenty.
Yeah, that makes a little bit more sense, I'm just saying that the office didn't seem to fit this use, so.
How many employees would typically be there on any given day?
I'm Jeff Miller, I own the Millstone Building and the property, and we're talking about. I did a log starting a month ago, I picked seven random days, and it averages eighteen carters per day total for the Millstone Building.
I mean, I mean, you're the dentist office.
It would start as a startup, so it would be like front desk staff, probably two, three assistants of the doctor, with room to expand to a few more assistants. We don't employ hygienists, assistant work, plus the doctor.
So you're talking, when it matches out, maybe seven or eight employees?
Yeah, maybe if it even gets to that number.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Will you go through the comments?
Did, did we want to talk about the Millstone parking and all?
Did we want to talk about the Millstone parking at all? Um and.
We we could, as Jeff said, he's been doing his own graphic study on the property and we've um has done seven.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. My family's owned it for twenty seven years. And started a month ago when this process got rolling, talking to Craig and I did a. Just a random log and it averages eighteen hours per day, different kinds of the day.
And do you have, like, the building uh demarcated for how much is warehouse and how much is office and so forth?
You have that shown on the table in L one point one at the bottom of the zoning chart and we have office space. About eight thousand square feet and warehouse is about seventeen thousand per addition.
Would be eighteen cars, did that include, assuming these business vehicles are your business vehicles?
All the land that you're looking at, that all target?
See, when, which are for lot A and B or for. For lot A and B, most of it is target. This is a section that is just east of the proposed lot B that is.
And then there's another. Exploding company or something that's above it.
Landscaping company.
A landscaping company.
A garage out back.
Yeah.
In the fenced in area and then they've actually kind of. Overshot the fence or whatever, but they're going to be moving inside the fenced in area, which is directly behind the building.
Right, okay.
So the area that has like the loose gravel and mulch and stuff like that, where is? That's going to be your parking and the staff?
That is right here. Yes, overflow parking.
Like on this ground here? Is it this additional?
So did you know how many spots are on, not on the new place, but existing?
Existing, uh we had, well, we counted fifty seven plus whatever is going away with the that parking lot. That's um where this building is known.
So what will there be after that building's built?
There will be twenty parking spaces for lot B and fifty seven parking spaces for lot A.
And that includes the overflow parking?
That includes the overflow.
Which is not paved right now.
It's not. Without that, it was still thirty, Victor, for a parking space.
What will the different elevations be for the parking area?
For, oh, for the this.
Yeah.
All the paving associated with lot A is not changing. There's no site changes occurring. Lot B, all of the parking lot will be essentially level. We um. The parking lot on the east as well, we'll say the parking lot that's on the south side of the building is is fairly level. The parking lot on the east side of the building has some slope on it.
Yes.
And uh it's all under five percent.
Doug, is there need to do a SWIP for both parcel A and B now that we're changing things?
My recommendation was to do a joint SWIP for both.
Okay.
Did we get that in?
He did have a comment for that. I guess we did a drainage analysis. So this, the this third area. Which is mostly the lot B is point seven acres or point, yeah, point seven.
But I feel it's hard to see what the size of lot B actually was. Was it taken on the drawings?
Lot B is point six acres and then when you throw in the area beyond it, on lot A, it becomes point seven acres.
So the reason for the SWIP is there's there's some significant trade infrastructure.
Okay.
So our drainage analysis, pretty accurate for what's really occurring. We can go through the comments.
Yes.
Okay, uh first comment was to provide the architectural drawings for the building. Um we will be providing that with the next submission. Overall set and ready to go.
Cover page now.
Will provide a description of proposed uses, including hours of operations, number of employees, expected volume of business. And the type and volume of traffic expected to be generated. So we can provide that in memo.
Both that's both parcel A and B.
A um. Let's, I think we can do it for, yeah, I think Jeff has a handle on what's going on with lot with first lot A. So I think between the two of us, we can come up with uh something we can put into a memo. Uh the SWIP we just discussed will prepare that.
Okay.
Let's see, um the next item, provide a properly certified survey of the property. We do have that. It was prepared by four siblings. So we'll we'll provide that. Um I thought we did, but maybe we didn't. It's part of our, or we do have it in our. It may not be in the the last submission, it may have been in the first submission. But we'll include it in a set moving forward. Uh depict the frontage requirements proposed for lot A and B. I just had a question on that because this is only doesn't have. Uh frontage requirements, so um I don't know what um. What the, if there's minimums or what's required. We can list the dimensions.
We'll have dimensions and there was no any grid that you could lock, so.
Uh depict our required easements for lot A and B, including traffic circulation. So we'll have uh. Uh loading spaces and pedestrian walk. So lot B will have a access easement over. Lot B will have an access easement over lot A's property for accessing the site.
And we'll need to see that in writing.
Yes, both will have that prepared. Yeah, okay. Uh let's see, provide lighting plans for both lot A and B. Lot B will have the lighting plan for that. Lot A, I don't think we're changing any of the lighting. Uh we could maybe depict what's existing out there and provide that. To see if we can emulate what's there.
Okay.
Um snow storage area, uh we do have one snow storage area depicted for um. Lot B and that was going to be on the east side of the upper parking lot into it. There's a swell there. Lot A, I'm not sure we're, maybe Jeff could give you an idea and we could show that. Um the next comment, provide detailed backup and calculations for building uses of the existing um Millstone Building. Determine parking requirements next. So I think what we'll do is expand the zoning table that's on L one point one to break it out for lot. A and lot B.
Terrific.
And we'll include that information. So uh let's see. Okay, I provide complete site plans for both lot A and B. Um so really nothing's occurring on lot A. So I think this um. I guess, or I guess the question, Doug, do you want us to show on each site, L two, L, L two point one, L three point one, the whole site? So that it's, uh we do show the entire site on L one point one.
So when when we're done with this, basically, we're going to have two commercial properties that usually require um site plan. So like, you know, when we come back, we can then set plans to make sure that.
So we asked for.
Generally, most of the comments just mirror it.
Yeah.
Right, you know, you've got one lot now and now we're going to have two. So we just need a site plan for both. So you want to read, we should kind of follow through. Comments kind of mirror all that.
Okay, so a separate site plan will say for lot A.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and I I just my own personal opinion, but that overflow parking, if it's not paved. I would like not to see it. Because if it's not paved and striped, it really is just a gravel. Whatever. So if they're planning on paving it, fine, you can leave it there, pave it, stripe it. But if they're not going to, then. I don't think it should be on plan, but that's just my thing.
How about it's just reliable as reserved for, you know, for expansion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem if it says reserved or something like that, but just, I mean, they're showing with stripes on it and overflow parking. It's really not overflow parking.
Just to show the count.
But they're not, they're not parking spot, so they shouldn't be in the comment. Again, I that that's just my thought. Others may have different opinion.
The red point, we have shown it as reserved.
Just write a reserve or something, yeah.
In the front of the building lines up with Millstone. Is that right?
It's pretty close. Yeah, it's pretty close, yeah. Uh the buildings are a little skewed.
Yeah.
Generally, it is in the same line.
What is that yellow thing out the front?
Uh that's a camping bed. There's a little retaining wall going in there.
It's a retaining wall, but but the rail starts back with that line. It's.
So you can sign right there. Yeah, the retaining wall, it's like the parking lot and then wraps uh wrapped around the corner of the building.
Yeah, okay.
Currently, that's what we're intending.
I think that's what I saw in the class.
That's what we have. I have that.
See, moving. We're uh see, provide complete site plans. Yeah, confirm approvals for water. So we'll um talk to Aqua and WAP. Get demos from them.
Okay.
Garden connections. For curb cut acceptance with DOT. I have um. Been coordinating with Jeff D P O T, so we'll see what his comments are relative to the curb cut, if you have to do any modifications.
Is it a new curb cut or?
No, it exists. They, but sometimes they uh they want it modified, okay, to conform to their standards, you know, they're not.
When are you going to start this?
Start the project?
Yeah.
Uh as soon as we get approved.
You're going to do it this year?
It will start over the.
Potentially, depending on how quickly we can use this process.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna need the documentation that we're talking about. We're gonna need that in so that we can review it all at the next meeting. And then if everything looks appropriate at that point, then we'll schedule it for public hearing.
Okay, so we're really not ready for a public hearing?
You're not, we're not ready. We're nowhere near ready yet.
Okay. Um, okay, when, as far as submissions for the next meeting, when, when is? Um usually it's two weeks before the meeting, but uh we're only two days away from the two weeks. Or was it ten days before the meeting?
I have to have everything Thursday.
Thursday.
And then November.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Let's tell you.
That that might be impossible.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, the the challenge would be the SWIP. I don't know if we need the SWIP for the public hearing. I think, I think.
No, I don't think we need it for the public hearing.
No, I mean.
I think everything you got in there is just documentation.
Yeah, and I I think so too. I really look at this and think we're just eyeing eyes across the piece. And that's, that's why I really think we're running. Unless, you know, just because we're down to the. Um, you know, just some minor differences and details at this point.
If you can get it in in the next few days, then we'll put it on the next meeting, the agenda, and then we'll have an opportunity to review everything. And if everything looks appropriate, um we'll schedule a public hearing.
Okay, all right. I got my staff ready to go tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Let's see what we can do. Uh I know Aqua and WAP, we have great connections there. I know we get that information pretty quick. I got a great relationship with DOT, so I know people that gather stuff. Lisa can really get together the tables pretty quickly. So I think we're in good shape. Um yeah, just pulling together this SWIP information to fill the challenge. Uh moving onward, um construction sequence and time schedule. Uh as we just said, we're going to start as soon as we can. Um and we'll try to finish as soon as we can because the doctor would like to get in the building and and get his practice going. Um I, what was the construction duration?
Um I'd have to check, but probably two, four months.
Say we start. Be operating back to all higher office. Um signage, um I don't, nothing, or I'm not sure if there's any signage changes to lot A. I I don't think there's anything, lot B, the signage will be on the building. I don't think we're talking about a monument sign.
If we are, we'll put it on there, but at this point, no.
Okay.
Signage on the building. And that will, I guess, in that zoning table will uh include the existing proposed uses. That currently occur in the sites. So I think, and I feel pretty confident that we can take care of um probably ninety percent of these items by Thursday.
Okay, if if you can indeed, Lisa will be in touch with us and we'll put it on the agenda.
So you don't formally have to schedule a hearing at this meeting, um the public hearing for the next meeting, or she could. Or is that what you mean?
No, we 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 we're required to give advance notice of the public hearing and right now there's insufficient for the November eighth.
The second meeting in November. Yeah, we'll get, if you get the man, then at our next meeting, we'll call for it for the next meeting.
Okay.
November twenty seventh.
I guess when we spoke last month, we were thinking that we would be scheduling this meeting for.
We we just don't have enough documents to do that right now. Okay, hopefully, hopefully, November eighth.
Okay, yeah, we'll push for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is William T. Adams. Initial presentation for two lot subdivision at seven zero six three Persler Road, Kirkville. This is all under tax stamp number zero four two zero one dash twenty one point one. Good evening, Mr. Adams.
Good evening.
You tell us what you are trying to do and give us a general idea.
Well, you raised five children and I've lived on Persler Road for fifty five years. These lots, one lot now, these lots came up for auction at auction in twenty seventeen. I bid in South of the, I won the bid and I bid on them because they connected the auction group after that. And I sold one that bid, but I mean, you know, to me, they made them all one lot. That's not red line. What I'd like to do is, there was three lots, three addresses. Seven zero six three, seven zero seven seven, and seven zero seven nine. The one lot, we had twenty five feet of road, so I'm not going to try to gain that lot back. So I'd like to do is subdivide it into the two lots that you should be looking at on the map. Um it's consistent with the area. In fact, if in the future, if everything goes through and it is approved. Both lots will be significantly larger than the original subdivision lots of that road. All the other lots are one hundred foot road frontage, approximately five hundred and sixty one feet deep, I believe.
Is there a house on the back of this property? Cause that's only a seventy five foot.
There is a house on that property. And that's seventy five foot road frontage and a hundred and seventy five feet.
One of the problems I'm seeing immediately is um in order to meet the qualifications, you would need two hundred foot of frontage.
Right, I talked to Lisa and she said that I actually have to go for very area variances on these lots.
Okay.
Which I intend to do that. She already gave me the application for that. And I already had to do this once prior. I also own seven one six three Persler Road. Which in twenty thirteen, I put a uh four bedroom, two bathroom modular home on that property. And that I needed to get an area variance and a road frontage variance and it was. And that, I needed to get an area variance and a road frontage variance, and it was granted. And that lot, I believe, is somewhere between possibly a half acre and three quarters of an acre. And if you look at these two lots that I would like to make out of this property, one of them is two point two three acres, which is about an acre bigger than the original lots on the road when it was originally subdivided. And the other one would be one point nine nine, which is still bigger, but less than what we require today.
So I think you're gonna need two variances, you're gonna need front line variance and area variance for the one property, for that one.
Um, now, there's one question I had, that one, I was talking to the surveyor, he just, he thinks that the one lot, um, the two point two three might be close to not needing the area variance, but I wasn't sure how to figure the square footage of a two point two three acre lot. Why, I don't think you do need.
Yeah, you don't, don't.
Acres, you know.
Okay, so I don't need one for that, so I just need the road frontage variance for that lot.
Two acres, right.
One twenty-five.
The darn near makes it.
You can ask your surveyor, how is this kind of point one?
No, no, they gave me, they gave me the, the stuff, I mean, I just, you know, I didn't ask for the square footage, I just asked for the, what I needed for here.
Take just a little bit from off, too.
Yeah.
Just move the line. Are there any buildings on either of the two lots?
Um, the, the lot is two point two three acres, I am in the process of putting a modular home on that part of that lot right now.
Okay.
That is a three bedroom, two bathroom home.
Is it a double wide?
Modular.
It's modular, yeah, okay.
It's, it's being built on, right, building on it right now?
Yes.
So this plan needs to show that?
Okay.
If, if it's there?
Okay.
So is anything, any existing structures should need to be on the plan, so we can look at it for setbacks and so forth?
Right.
Where do you get a modular home?
Where?
Yeah.
They sell them at, uh, like Dave's Mobile Home, several locations.
All right.
And there's nothing on that one? No structures? Okay. So what we really need to do is, we need to hear from you that the zoning board of appeals has granted you the two variances for that one and one variance for that two. And once that has been accomplished, if the board has questions, we can ask, but other than that, we'll schedule a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, other questions? No. The, uh, the next item on the agenda is CVE, North America Inc. This is on relative to subdivision, a site plan, special use permit. This is a solar array located on a new good road. It's all on one tax map number zero nine nine dash one dash three. Believe we were waiting for the time to expire, we declared this a type one action. We had to wait for thirty days in order to move forward with anything. Is there anything new that we should be aware of before we start discussing?
No, we submitted the decommissioning plans with the cost estimates, and then we submitted the agreement.
Doug, have we come to a figure that we agreed on relative to the decommissioning?
I have not.
Okay.
Look, there, uh, as a, a condition, we'll add that decommission is one of the.
That's in today's dollars.
Okay.
And we're gonna decommission it in thirty-five years, don't you think? So I'd like to know when, how it's gonna be worth thirty-five years. Yeah.
Wouldn't we all?
I think it gets reassessed every five years, according to the zoning code, it gets updated.
Okay.
Oh, within it?
Yeah, so we have a figure now, but in year thirty, it'll be a new estimate.
I couldn't read the email. How, how far is it?
Yeah, near your home?
Yeah.
Along the northern edge of the property? Yeah, so it's probably about a hundred and fifteen.
Oh, okay.
From the property line.
Yeah, yeah.
And then a little further to your home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's not fifty feet?
It's not fifty feet.
So I think we'd like to do this in some type of an organized fashion, and the first thing we need to discuss is, uh, we have a statute here in the town of Manlius relative to saturation. It's the one mile radius from, uh, any existing array. And I think we have to make a determination on that, and then we'll go into, uh, SECPRA after that, and then special use, uh, for each of the three premises, and then we'll get into site plan and, um, subdivision. So, uh, the current law says regarding saturation, in consideration whether to issue a special use permit, the planning board must consider the proximity of similar large solar array systems to the one being proposed. In no event shall an LSES be placed within one mile of an existing LSES without specific findings by the planning board that such placement does not adversely affect the community character of the surrounding properties. And I believe we're talking about the one mile radius is between each of the three solar farms that we're talking about here. Anyone have thoughts?
I, I would like to just say, I believe it's not only these three, but the one on towns in North Eagle Village. I checked that once before, it was point seven miles, point six. Doug, you, you and I looked at that once before, so that is within one mile. But my instinct on this is that they are so well hidden, these three, that it shouldn't be an issue.
I would second that motion. Oh, so is this, is this a motion? I'm gonna interpret what you said as being a motion to make a specific finding that this is that, uh,
Adversely.
adversely affect the community character.
Yeah, okay.
And that was seconded by, I mean, absolutely. Anyone wanna have a further discussion on this?
I think we all agree with that, when it is decided.
And I think because it's gonna be done by one company at one given time, they're all in very close proximity with each other, and they're all hidden. They're nonvisual, no one's gonna know they're there. In light of that, I don't think there is any adverse impact, so. So I, I call for a vote, all in favor of them.
I know that we do have a, have the written portion of this resolution, if you want to adopt that.
Which I.
We could, we could do that.
Do you have the resolution?
Yes, yeah, you didn't get it, you didn't get it?
Where did you send, where'd you send it?
Uh, Saturday morning.
So this, I haven't seen it.
Here. Go on there, what you said, I thought you had read it.
No, I haven't seen it. I don't want to slow down the process.
Okay.
Okay.
Starting right here.
It's covered, starting right here.
Yeah. Do you have any, just read this portion of it?
Exactly.
Yeah. I'll just, I'll, I'll read it. Um, this project consists of three nominally, nominally separate solar farms that are within one mile of each other. The board has carefully considered the saturation issue, and for the reasons I'm finding set forth below, and in a secret determination, which we'll do, is it is of the opinion that the close proximity of three solar farms to each other does not adversely affect the community character of this surrounding properties. And in fact, their placement together will have less of an environmental impact than if they were separate projects being a mile separated from one another. The development of solar renewable energy in the town is a high priority and should be encouraged by the planning board and is based on the town's recent decision to forego a moratorium on solar farms, it being the strong policy of the town to encourage the development of renewable energy in the town under the right circumstances and the proper environmental review. While three separate solar arrays, which are part of this project, are nominally three separate projects, and therefore the town, they are required to be one mile apart, unless the board determines with findings that one such mile, uh, separate separation is not required. They are in owned and common ownership and will develop, be developed by the same contractor, and will be operated as one eleven point five megawatt, is that the right number now? Operation and from all appearances will look like one large solar farm. The purpose of the saturation provision in the town code is to ensure as best as possible that solar farms do not dominate one neighborhood by being placed at intervals that are too close together, and are viewed on both sides of residential development. This project site is largely rural or institutional, FM school, with no residential properties that will be visually impacted by the project. The fact that the project is consolidated into one area is actually a positive environmental consideration. In this case, since if all three solar farms are spread out, it would have the potential of impacting more residential neighborhoods. The natural woodland surrounding the project site provides initial screening to the neighboring properties and the conditions set forth in site plan will reduce any impacts on the neighborhood, and in fact, the array are for all intents and purposes invisible to nearly, to nearby properties. Based upon these findings, the community character of the neighborhood will not change by the project, and the goals of the town to encourage renewable energy development will be met by the project. Through a payment in lieu of taxes, through a host community agreement, the companies will provide much-needed revenue to the town that would not be provided if the properties remain vacant and undeveloped. NYSERDA has determined that it supports the three separate arrays, as for community solar five, five megawatts is the largest array that can be installed, but where there are several in close proximity, the goal of solar community is achieved, it is therefore resolved. Um, the close proximity of the three solar farms to each other does not adversely affect the community character of the surrounding properties, and in fact, their placement together will have less of environmental impact than if they were separate projects being a mile apart.
Michelle's still second, yeah. You still adapting that?
I did, yeah, I did a lot of research on that.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
I, any opposed?
I'm recused.
Answer recused. Um, motion passes. So, uh, saturation is no longer an issue. Uh, we now have to do SECPRA, and we're gonna do one SECPRA for the entire premises, and this is gonna be the long SECPRA, because this is a type one.
Um, so just to, to note for the record that, uh, because these are in such close proximity, and in many respects have been determined to be like a single project, uh, we would not, uh, do, uh, them as separate, uh, SECPRA, but there's no segmentation. So here we go. Number one, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the project site, and we are remembering answering um, either a moderate, um, impact or large or no or small impact. So there's the, here are the subquestions. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater.
No.
Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface.
No.
Yes.
There's a lot of bedrock around there.
There's a lot of rock.
It's gotta be exposed somewhere.
But small, small impact?
I would say small.
Yes, I guess that's.
Who are the guardian? The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. No.
No.
Um, the proposed, uh, action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal.
No.
The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area.
No.
The proposed action may result in the modification, uh, next question. Whether the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on this site, such as Cliff's students' minerals, fossils, caves. Questions are, the proposed action may affect or is adjacent to a geological feature listed as registered on the national landmark.
No.
Are there any other landforms that are going to have significant impact? Okay. Um, next is impact on the surface water, and here are the questions. The proposed action may create a new water body.
No.
No. The proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent or more than a, a ten acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water. The proposed action may involve dredging more than one hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction within an adjoining or freshwater type, uh, tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body.
No.
The proposed action may, uh, create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments.
No.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more intake or withdrawal of water from surface water.
No.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfall for discharge of wastewater to surface water.
No.
The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies.
No.
The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action.
No.
The proposed action may involve the application of. No, and I say if they're broken, they would. Okay. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides and herbicides in or around any water body.
No.
The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicide, oh, I already said that one. May, may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facility.
No.
Next is the impact on groundwater. Um, the proposed action may result in nor additional use of groundwater. Um, and here are the questions. The proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on existing.
No.
Water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity of the local water supply or aquifer.
Yeah.
The proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer.
Yeah.
The proposed action, uh, may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater.
No.
The proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells and locations where groundwater is or suspected to be contaminated.
No.
The proposed action may require bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or in aquifer.
No.
The proposed action may involve the commercial appreciate, application of pesticides at the one hundred feet of potable drinking water irrigation sources.
No.
Uh, impact on flooding. Um, the proposed action may result in develop of a, of a designated floodway.
No.
Um, development within a one hundred year flood plain.
No.
Five hundred year flood plain.
No.
Um, require modification of existing drainage pattern.
No.
Or change flood of water flows that contribute to flooding.
No.
If there's a dam located on the proposed action, is the dam in need of repair or upgrade?
No.
Impacts on air. If the proposed action requires federal or state air emission permits. It does not.
No.
The proposed action may generate ten tons per year or more of any designated pollutant.
No.
Uh, does it require state air registration or produce emissions rate of contaminants?
No.
Um, the proposed action may re, relieve, okay, that's enough. We'll need to answer that one. Proposed action may result in the combustion or thermal treatment of more than one ton of refuse per hour.
No.
No. Impacts on plants and animals. Um, will the proposed action cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species?
Should, no.
Um, will it result in the, uh, degradation of any habitat or threatened or endangered species? Um, any, uh, loss in reduction of the population, um, of any species in need of conservation?
No.
Degradation of any, um, habitat used by any species of special concern?
No.
Let me, let me just ask, it's been a while since I've looked at these plans, but are you gonna surround these solar projects with fencing?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They have chain link.
And how many acres will be fenced in?
Seventy-nine. Total, on all the regions of disturbance.
How high of a fence?
Yeah, in six, six feet, six, seven feet.
So I'm just, the only reason I'm asking these questions is that I am sure that there's all sorts of animals, whether it's fox deer, whatever, that live up in that area, once they're fenced, then you're pushing them out. So I don't know if that impacts the question you just asked.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Very dangerous, yeah, really. Wildlife-friendly fencing. That allows animals to pass underneath.
Pass underneath?
Yeah. But I don't know how high off the ground it is, um, I know it's a different type of fencing.
Okay.
And we've installed on our Massachusetts project.
Which is to keep people out.
To allow the, the flow of animals back and forth, and to keep people out.
But this is for like endangered.
Endangered, okay, all right.
Yeah, anyway, but the, the, uh, good question.
Just, just like we're trying to. Are you, uh, cutting trees? Yep, some, some tree, some acreage.
They took a lot out of there.
So we've got, uh.
Already.
We've got the bad issue. Yeah.
Indiana brown?
We, northern long-eared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're currently waiting for a response from US Fish and Wildlife on how to mitigate against the northern long-eared bat. We're currently waiting for a response from U S Fish and Wildlife on how to mitigate against the northern long-eared bat. Did an acoustic bat survey. They found a few bats, few. Protected bats. But I think what that.
So, yeah.
Construction during the winter, most likely.
Okay.
We, we have the same issue on.
Clearing during.
We have the same issue on the town project that close proximity.
Okay, so if we put in here that the applicant, um, can mitigate the small-eared, uh, bat. Uh, situation with, um, a plan. For timing, right? Okay.
No.
No, I'm building on this.
And, and what else? It's basically a timing thing. Is that correct?
Mitigation for the bat?
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Timing in accordance with D E C.
Mm hmm, and U S Fish and Wildlife.
And U S Fish and Wildlife. I'll give that to you.
Were there any others that came back?
I'd have to check the report. I think only two percent of the calls, the bat calls that they detected were northern long-eared bat. I think big brown bat was detected. I, I, I have to report, I have to check with you.
My sense is that's.
So, um, if, if we look at the question, proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting breeding foraging over, uh, habitat of. Predominant species that occupy or use the project site. The answer is going to be no or small impact because it can be mitigated. Okay?
Yeah.
Just say. Um. Does it involve the use of herbicides or pesticides?
No.
Conversion of more than ten acres of forest or grassland.
Um, they say exactly ten acres.
Are we clearing for the trees?
Yeah.
It's about thirty, thirty, about thirty.
Um.
Along the western.
That, that's going to, that's going to impact the habitat. The answer is yes, same answer. It's going to be mitigated. Right? Okay.
How do you mitigate cutting trees there?
No, 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 it, 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 it's only the cutting trees as relates to the habitat.
Oh, okay.
Will you be able to see the panels, the trees down?
No, there's still about a thousand meter trees to the homes on the west.
You were talking about like the trees in between that were like that you showed us that were.
Yeah.
There was like a line in them that separated the two.
Yep, there's some trees to delineate the fields. But we also had a couple areas we have to. Clear into the forest.
Which like towards student.
Where do you get a little bit?
Um, agricultural resources. The proposed, uh, action may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State land classification system.
No.
The proposed action may sever cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural land.
I'm, I'm not so sure about that. I don't, I don't really know. I can look at the soil map and see if, if the soils were within.
Those are good soils.
I gave lowly class one, two, four. I, I didn't die.
Good soils and have a lot of.
What?
Well, but is it going to impact to them? I mean, if they're, they're putting something on top of it, so they're not impacting it, they're just putting something on top of it.
Not destroying them.
Right. The soils are.
They're going to be there.
Yeah, go with the note.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. It's, will it result in excavation or compaction of the soil profile? Of active agricultural land?
Minimal.
Very minimal.
Um, the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses.
No.
No. Not irrevers.
The proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system.
Minimal, minimal, because it's time, you're giving the time.
Yeah. Proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland.
No.
No.
The proposed, uh, proposed, uh, project is not consistent with adopted municipal farming protection plan. No, done with that. Um, aesthetic resources. Proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource.
No.
Proposed action may result in the obstruction and elimination of or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views.
No.
Proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points.
Yeah.
Um, situation that or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents or recreational. Um.
Nothing.
No.
No.
If it's for recreational uses.
The proposed action may cause a diminishment of public enjoyment or of an aesthetic research, resource. Um, there are similar visible projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. Less than a mile, correct? But the impact, uh, determined is.
Minimal.
Minimal.
Yeah. Then we're doing one.
Thank goodness.
Is that resolution for less than a mile by the fourth project to that's point seven miles away?
Well, we didn't really, uh, put it in there.
Well, this would have covered all of them, but the language.
Add it, yeah.
Mm hmm. Yep, uh, we can add that in.
Add it just to cover.
Mm hmm.
But this is the same reasoning.
Correct. I will, I will fix that. Um, impact on historic, um, and archaeological resources.
No.
Uh, the proposed action may occur in or dis into historic or archaeological resource.
No.
Yeah.
The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction in open space in any adopted municipal plan.
No.
No.
Um, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to critical environmental area.
No.
The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation.
No.
The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy.
No.
Just the opposite.
Yeah.
Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise odors or outdoor lighting.
No.
The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure.
No.
Out to new or existing sources of contaminants.
No.
No.
Subquestions. Um, the proposed action is not consistent, consistent with adopted land use plans.
No.
The proposed action is consistent with the existing community character.
No.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that type one or is that special?
This is.
It's a long form.
Yeah, it's a long form. Yep.
Can we cover it?
We covered it, so.
I, I would entertain a motion for a negative declaration.
So I'm so moved.
I second.
I think Ernie, I think Ernie actually picked you, Fred.
Even Valerie will second.
And Valerie seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. You still restrain.
I guess, whatever I'm supposed to do.
Okay. Um, last thing is, we're getting into a special use permit. We are not doing a special use permit relative to lot one. Lot one is the very small one point two acre lot that has on it only the cell tower. So we're going to start with lot number two. Lot number two is the one that is immediately to the west, uh, a little bit and all the way to the south. It's, um, of that lot. You want to do, uh?
Sure. Sure. Um, so on the special use permit. And let me, um.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so. Um, everyone agrees with the whereas clauses, I assume, and the resolution will adopt them for each. For the, uh, first special, uh, for the entirety of the special use permit. Whereas the solar arrays on each of lots two, three, and four require its own special permit. The special use criterion is set forth in the town code is hereby reviewed as to each of the lots. That is determined as follows. Whereas this board has reviewed the O C P B determination of May twelve with respect to the project. Whereas this board has issued a negative declaration for the project. And whereas each and every finding and determination here to four set forth in this resolution is incorporated related herein. And whereas the special use criterion is set forth in the town code is hereby reviewed. And as to each of the lots, it is determined as follows. So lot two. Is the community protected from traffic congestion? Uh, conflicts, flooding, and excessive soil erosion, unnecessary noise, lighting, or odors. Wasteful energy use and other forms of pollution.
Yes.
Yes.
Does the plan protect the community from inappropriate design and other matters of scenic and aesthetic significance?
Yes.
Does the plan ensure the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it was proposed?
Yes.
Can any adverse impact be mitigated with compliance with reasonable conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
And the conditions are set forth in this approval. Does the project conform with the town's planning objective?
Yes.
Yes.
It supports the town's, uh, board objective of supporting renewable energy in a responsible way. Considering that within findings, this board finds that solar array is proposed on lot two will not have an adverse effect on adjacent lands. The immediate neighborhood or on the character of the community and the special permit is therefore granted with the following conditions. All conditions of the subdivision approval, which will be granted as part of this application must be complied with. The applicant shall fulfill all requirements of site plan approval to be granted. The special permit and use allowed pursuant, um. Here to shall be for a term of, and I know we've said fifteen years.
Fifteen.
Is that? Okay. From the date, the certificate of completion is issued from the town for the project. Nothing herein shall in any manner limit the town's right to enforce any condition at any time in the case of non-compliance. And this is consistent with our other approvals. Applicant shall have one year from the day here up to pull a building construction permit from the town. And the applicant shall complete the project within two years after pulling the permit, at which time the certificate of completion is issued. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of the host community agreement as entered into between the town board and the applicant. This board accepts the modification of O C P B referral of May twelve, twenty twenty one as a condition of this approval as follows. The applicant must contact the New York State Department of Transportation to coordinate requirements. For the existing driveway and east end of turnpike in order to satisfy commercial driveway standards. Which will require paving the portion of the driveway in the state right of way. To further meet department requirements, the applicant must submit a copy of stormwater. Uh, SWIP to the department for review and any mitigation required by the department shall be complied with. Uh, next condition, the decommissioning plan shall be approved by the town attorney and cash deposit for decommissioning shall be deposited by the applicant with the town. So that is.
That's on lot two. Was that added?
I added it.
Okay. The, the question I have, I, that's one that's come up that people have talked to me about, I want to at least raise it. I got my answer last week from Jamie and Joe, but I'm just going to put it out there so everybody knows what the answer was. I, I was concerned. Um, about what does the town get out of these solar projects? Pilot agreement and the community solar agreement are ways that the town can get money. And I said, why are we approving this prior to knowing what those agreements dictate? And the answer was, it's none of my business in essence, that it's really between the town board and the applicant. And we have nothing to do with it. So. Even though I'd like to know what those are prior to us granting. Special use permit. Um, it, it violates, I guess, maybe even put it in better words than I could, Joe.
What's theirs is theirs and what's ours is ours.
Yes.
That's not ours.
And that's not ours. So I wanted at least raise it and is a pilot agreement in here somewhere? That this is contingent on the successful completion of pilot agreement.
We're talking about the community host agreement, isn't it?
That's in here, but not the pilot agreement. We can't put.
But that's part of.
It's part of the plan. I thought there are two separate things.
No, really. They are two.
Are they two separate?
Yeah.
Is the word you're using pilot, pilot agreement?
Yeah.
Payment in lieu of taxes. Payment in lieu of taxes.
And the town board has decided that that will be negotiated by O C I D. We have nothing to do with setting any rates and terms. That's out of our answer.
We have been informed.
Yeah.
By the town board attorney. That the agreement is, there is an agreement in place that they've come to terms. The agreement is extremely favorable to the town of Manlius. And, uh, although we don't know the details, it is none of our business. The, the town board has come to this conclusion that they have, uh. Come to an agreement on a very favorable host agreement and we, we should be satisfied with that. And just make this condition upon them following through.
The same with the host, uh, community agreement too.
Yes.
Yes, that's in here, but the pilot agreement wasn't, that's the reason. And I thought there were two separate things if I'm wrong.
There are two separate things.
That's right.
But they're covered in one agreement.
I thought that, yeah, I thought there was.
If I can, um. Okay, so we, we need a motion of that.
So we're gonna, um, based upon what we have written here and what was just been discussed. I would entertain a motion for a special use permit for lot two.
No. I'll make a motion. For a special use.
Second by Eric. Can we have discussion? Don't we, yes, don't we need to have a subdivision approved before we can approve a special use?
We'll do it.
It doesn't exist.
It's, it's, we're going to do it. It's gonna, it's coming. It's all part of the same.
We're gonna be here.
You gotta wait another ten minutes.
Alright, alright.
And may, and, and may I digress because I would like to fix the, um, the previous resolution about saturation. Um, to, to add further for the same reasons that set forth above, the, um. The, uh, board determines that the proximity of the, which, which solar.
Townsend.
Townsend.
Townsend, North Eagle.
North Eagle Village. Does not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, neighboring properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. At our public hearing, we had, there were eight people who spoke out against this project. And the same evening, we had a public hearing relative to the Salt Springs project and, and double that amount spoke out against that project. And they set forth, it's concerned citizens who set forth some legitimate concerns that they had relative to toxicity. Leakage, uh, they brought a number of issues forward. Um, we on our own did additional research to determine that there's no validity to that. But this town appointed a solar commission. And the solar commission did an investigation into all of this. They consulted with a number of experts and they had come to the preliminary conclusion. That there is no issue here, there is no toxicity. And they fully endorse solar energy as a means of renewable energy that has no impact on environment. And that will, um, be, that, that'll put the town of Manlius in a good light relative to climate change and everything else. Uh, reducing carbons. Uh, so they, they're very much in favor of all this, so we're not discarding what our citizens have complained about. We, we've examined it, we've determined that, uh, the experts are telling us that it, that is not a concern. That there is no toxicity coming out of this, that there wouldn't be no, uh, contaminants going into the aquifer. And in light of all of that, that's why we've continued to proceed. We got a motion? We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're going into that three. This is a special use permit. Lot three is starting at the western boundary of lot two and it goes further west. Uh, it is the largest of the parcels, one hundred and thirty-five point seven acres.
Okay.
Same question.
Is there any reason that the answers aren't going to be the same?
Well, I will go through the answered questions because we're required to, but I won't go through the conditions of that. We can simply read that, but we do have to do the questions, okay? Is the community protected from traffic congestion, conflicts, flooding, and excessive oil erosion, unnecessary noise, lighting, and odors, wasteful energy, and other forms of pollution?
Yes.
Yes.
Does the plan protect the community from inappropriate design and other matters of scenic and aesthetic significance?
Yes.
Does the plan ensure the proposed? Does the plan ensure the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed? Can any adverse impact be mitigated with compliance with reasonable conditions? The conditions are set forth in this approval. Does the project conform with the town's planning objective? Supports the town board objective of supporting renewable energy in a responsible way. Considering that within findings, this board finds that solar arrays proposed on lot three will not have an adverse effect on adjacent lands, the immediate neighborhood, or on the character of the community, and the special permit is therefore granted with the conditions same as set forth in lot two.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard. Second by Valerie. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion. Continuing to be recused. Motion carries.
Okay, lot four.
Lot four is the last lot. It's the furthest on the west side, and it's underneath lot three. It's north of lot three. And it's forty-three point nine acres.
Is the community protect, protected from traffic congestion, conflicts, flooding, and excessive soil erosion, unnecessary noise, lighting, and odor, odors, wasteful energy use, and other forms of pollution? Does this plan protect the community from inappropriate design and other matters of scenic and aesthetic significance? Does the plan ensure the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed? Can any adverse impact be mitigated with compliance with reasonable conditions? Conditions are set forth in this approval. Does the project conform with the town's planning objective? This supports the town board objective of supporting renewable energy in a responsible way. Considering that within findings, this board finds that solar array as proposed on lot four will not have an adverse effect on adjacent lands, the immediate neighborhood, or on the character of the community, and the special permit is therefore granted with the following conditions same as lot two.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for the special permit for lot four. This leaves us with site plan approval and subdivision. Is there anyone who would like to discuss this? There being no request for discretion, I would entertain a motion relative to site plan approval.
If I can read that, whereas each and every finding and determination here to four set forth in this resolution is incorporated herein, now therefore as to each of lots two, three, and four, the segments are approved with the condition that the special use permit conditions are fulfilled, that all conditions of subdivision approval are complied with.
Motion by Arnie, second by Richard. All in favor? Any opposed? And one recusal. Motion passes.
I'd like to apologize on behalf of Rich and myself, making this three separate things.
I thought, I thought it was proper, and I think it is. I'm not, I'm not apologizing. That's right. That's right.
So we still have?
No, we're gonna do a subdivision.
And would you be kind enough to read that last paragraph?
I will. Whereas each and every finding and determination here to set forth in this resolution is incorporated herein. Whereas this board has reviewed the OCPB referral of May twelve, twenty twenty-one, which found no significant adverse inter-community or county-wide implications on the subdivision, the subdivision plan is presented as approved with the following conditions. Number one, the final cross-access easement agreements relating to each of the lots shall be approved by the planning board attorney, and shall be filed with the Onondaga County Clerk simultaneously with the filing of the subdivision map. Applicants must, applicant must file the subdivision map in the Onondaga County Clerk's office in accordance with the rules of Onondaga County and provide a copy of the stamp filed map with the town of Manlius Department of Planning and zoning.
Is, is this would be in accordance with a map dated December fourteenth, two thousand twenty?
Yeah, minus four twenty-three, twenty-one.
What's the subdivision map?
What, so is, there was a, we resubmitted showing the internal easements, I think in May, April, May.
I got mine's dated April twenty-third.
So we would do it in accordance with the maps provided on April twenty-third, two thousand.
Easement agreement, that can be finalized in sense, but we would like to get something out there that says the easements are a condition of this approval. They can not be modified with respect without the permission of the town. So it currently says they can be modified and writing by the parties. The town needs to be a party to that. So they can't be modified without the town. Or eliminated, and I'll send the language to Jared.
So it'd be the moves is accepted. I don't know, you were packing up pretty quick.
So moved by Mike, second by Fred.
Oh, did I, did I say the decommissioning? I think I, I did. Yeah, yes, I put that in that in the.
That was early.
He edited it as G.
Motion made, and second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You net carries except for one recusal.
I would move to a meeting adjourned.
Second.
We stand adjourned until the next meeting, which is currently scheduled for November eighth.